I now call the September 23, 2019 WSSC Board to Order. In addition to those who see before you, there will be Dr. Huff and Dr. Sontag participating by phone. Dr. Huff, are you connected?
Yes, I am.
Dr. Sontag, are you connected?
Yes, I am.
In the opening, please join me in the Pledge Allegiance today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Report, Ms. Samara Sharman.
The fifth grade class at West is selling fresh colorful mums to raise money for their class. If you ordered mums, you can pick them up Friday, September 27th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the playground behind West. Finally, the West playfield is nearly complete as they await the striping of the new blacktop on September 30th. West is very pleased with how the project has turned out and is excited for the students to be able to use the field. The school would like to thank the Playfield Committee, West Parents, Nick Sorrelli, Ferg Abbott, Martha Kew, Dr. Palmer, and the board for their support of this project. At SRS this Friday, September 27th, is Spirit Night at Swarthmore Pizza from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. If you mention SRS as you order or pick up your meal, a portion of your bill will be donated to the SRS Home and School Association. Finally, next Wednesday, October 2nd, is National Walk to School Day. Dr. Tuck, teachers, and parents will walk students to school departing from either the clock tower at the Swarthmore train station or Trinity Church. This project aims to spread physically and environmentally healthy habits throughout the school since walking is a great way to exercise while also reducing air pollution from car emissions. Moreover, the project can improve the sense of community within the school as children walk to school together and is a fun way to start the day. Last week at NPE, several students participated in their homeroom student council elections for the 2019 to 2020 school year. NPE congratulates all of those who ran for office and to all students who demonstrated an interest in school leadership. Finally, this upcoming Thursday, September 26th, is NPE's Back to School Night. Parents will have the opportunity to visit their child's classroom, meet their teachers, and hear from the PTO regarding initiatives for the upcoming school year. Back to School Night at NPE always has tremendous turnout from the community, and the school looks forward to seeing everyone. A full schedule can be found by visiting the NPE website. For the middle school, Back to School Night is this Wednesday, September 25th, for 7th and 8th grade parents. The middle school staff looks forward to seeing everyone. The program will begin promptly at 7:00 p.m. Over 600 students will perform on Kings Field this Friday evening during the annual band night. Come out to hear the combined middle and high school bands perform before the game at 6:30 p.m. Finally, the book fair begins Tuesday in the library at SHMS and will run until Friday. Students will have the opportunity to choose from a wide array of books, including graphic novels and popular teen fiction. At the high school, this weekend is homecoming weekend. First, there will be a fall festival before the football game by the parking lot next to the orthodontist's office. Since this year's homecoming theme is "A Night in the City," there will be Philly-themed food trucks at the fair. Moreover, individual clubs will set up booths, including tables for arts and crafts, games, and more. This is a wonderful opportunity for clubs to fundraise money and the community to come together and enjoy the evening together before the football game against Marple Newton at 7:00. Then on Saturday, we will host our homecoming dance. We expect north of 600 students to attend, making it the most popular dance of the year. This year, Student Council has decided to donate a portion of each ticket sale to a local Philadelphia charity in order to give back to the community. Between the festival, the game, and the dance, there are plenty of opportunities for students to get involved this weekend. Finally, next week on Thursday, we will host our annual Panthers Go Pink event with our varsity and JV field hockey and women's soccer teams in action against Harrington. The games begin at 3:45, and from 5:00 to 9:00, many of our teams will be running activities around the track to raise money for Unite for Her, an organization committed to helping women diagnosed with breast cancer or ovarian cancer navigate their way through treatment by providing complementary therapies designed to promote physical and emotional wellness. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Palmer.
Thank you, Dr. Rieger. I'd like to update our community on the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, also known as PAES. Many of you are aware of PAES, but for those of you who are not, PAES is a biennial survey of youth in our 6th, 8th, 10th, and 12th grades. PAES collects information on mental health and youth attitudes and behaviors toward alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, and other problem behaviors. They want to know what our youth think and believe about antisocial behaviors, and what our youth think about their school environment. Questions are asked in four domains consisting of the community, school, family, and the peer individual. And the questions allow schools and communities to see what is happening in all aspects of their youth's lives. It provides a holistic view of our students' environment, including the perspective of communities, schools, families, and peers, and it helps to identify factors that can prevent a child from being ready to learn when they arrive at school each day. PAES is the only survey offered in Pennsylvania that collects level of detailed risk and protective factor data used to identify individual community needs. School districts and counties can work together with local prevention partners to select and implement appropriate services to address those specific risks and protective factors identified by the PAES data in our community. We do analyze our PAES data to ensure that we are supporting our students where they need it most, and we do find that our students' needs change over time. The survey, which will be administered this fall, will include questions related to alcohol, tobacco, other drug use, violent behaviors, mental health, and other health risk behaviors, and related risk and protective factors. The survey questions have been designed to measure behaviors as well as our students' knowledge on a variety of these areas. The survey is completely anonymous and confidential, and no student's response will ever be connected with that particular student. We are appreciative that we have access to the survey at no cost to us. It's funded by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the PA Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs, and the PA Commission on Crime and Delinquency. And we look forward to receiving our report in April. And I know at the high school that Dr. Brown will present the findings shortly after we receive them. Dr. Yannikone had always done that as well. So for parents who are wondering if we will continue that, we will absolutely continue that in the high school, and I'm betting that we will share the results in the middle school as well. We did not do the middle school survey two years ago, but we will do the middle school and the high school this year. And, Dr. Rieger, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. Our third item on the agenda is board announcements. The board met in executive session on September 16th regarding safety and security matters. Tonight before this meeting, we met on litigation matters. Our fourth item, we have one focused topic on the agenda tonight on sleep and school start times with Dr. Jones. Dr. Palmer, would you like to get us started?
I would, as I see Dr. Jones going to the podium. I am delighted to introduce her this evening. You see her frequently here as our Secondary Director of Curriculum, but tonight she is our facilitator of our Sleep and School Start Times Committee and Task Force and our study. And we have had this as our goal back in the spring. I believe it was in May that we adopted the goal, and we have been working on this through the summer and even at the beginning of the school year. And our presentation this evening will bring the community up to speed on where we are, what our process looks like, and when we might conclude. So, Dr. Jones, it's yours.
Thank you. Well, good evening. This is the first of what will likely be many board presentations on a very important topic that we are studying right now. Our investigation into adolescent sleep and later school start times, as Dr. Palmer suggested, began back in May. I want to give you a little bit of background about this study. It did not just come from our area. In fact, in October of 2018, the Pennsylvania Senate unanimously approved a resolution directing the Joint State Government Commission to establish an advisory committee to conduct a study of issues, benefits, and options related to instituting a later start time to the school day in secondary schools. The Commission's report is due to be completed and published no later than October 18th, 2019. We spoke with Dr. Wendy Troxel, who was here last week to give a presentation at the high school. She is serving on this Joint State Government Commission. We asked what outcome she thought would be a part of that. What she said is that they do not anticipate a policy will be handed down, that the local education agencies are expected to follow. Rather, she expected that the state would validate the research findings around sleep and would allow the districts to make local choices related to the research. But we will be looking for that report to be coming out in the next few weeks. In May, our own school board adopted the following, that we will name the study of adolescent sleep needs and school start times as a district goal. And so we are going to investigate as part of that goal. Our timeline was also established, and that began in May, and we are looking to end by February of 2020 for a final report to the board from the task force. And we also, as part of this, joined the Regional Adolescent Sleep Needs Coalition, the southeastern division of that, and so we attend those meetings as well. So one of the things I thought would be important to note, some of these folks are also involved in the regional coalition. But these are the Pennsylvania districts that have changed start times. So there are 13 districts listed there. They did similar investigations, and these are the districts that resulted in a change to start times. We expect that there may be other districts who investigated this issue and did not change those start times, but information about that has not been made available from our coalition, so that would just be speculation. What we know for sure is that these districts did an investigation and did change their school start times. The ones at the top right are those that have changed their start times to any time between 7:50 and 8:10 in the morning. The ones on the bottom are schools that have changed their high school start times either between 8:15 and all the way up until 8:40. So when we look at this, we're looking at eight districts who have started between 7:50 and 8:10, and five districts that have gone as late as 8:40. The second piece of information I wanted to share with you is that in addition to those who have already done the investigation and have changed their school start times, these are the districts that are currently investigating school start times, possibly changing them to later. And you can see the various counties. 12 of these districts are our neighboring districts and counties, and some of them are also members of the Regional Adolescent Sleep Needs Coalition. Now, Dr. Wendy Troxel's presentation is available on the website, and so I recommend that if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that, that you do so. In the meantime, I've pulled this information, just as a brief slide, about what we know in terms of research on sleep deprivation in adolescents. This can also be found in our FAQs, which is on our dedicated webpage to sleep and school start times. I will show you how to find that webpage in a little bit. But one of the things that we've come to understand, that according to the research, when we have sleep deprivation in adolescents, we're looking at an effect on their health, their safety, and their performance. Things like weight gain and obesity, substance abuse, decreased emotional regulation, an increase in motor vehicle accidents, and risk-taking behaviors, decrease in concentration and in academic performance, among others, are things that are at risk when we have students who are sleep deprived. Later, I'm going to be sharing with you some of the research from our own students, from our May survey, of how they feel they perform with any kind of sleep deprivation. So I'll be sharing that with you in just a little bit. The core committee is a group of administrators, and they developed two overarching questions that will help guide our research in this investigation. The first is, to what extent can a later school start time impact the health, well-being, and performance of Strathhaven High School students? And we felt there were really two sub-questions that we want to investigate that will lead to more clarity in the overarching question. The first of which is, what are the current sleep habits? We're going to use both the May survey and the survey we'll be administering in October to get that information. The second sub-question is, how do our students' sleep habits compare with the local and national data and the research on sleep and school start times? So we're looking to see whether or not we're in line with them or not. The second overarching question has to be looking at our community, looking at the stakeholders involved in this. So to what extent would a change in school start times affect the district families and the community? And our sub-question really is fairly broad. What are the unique characteristics of the Wallingford Swarthmore School District? Where this may be possible in other school districts? We do have unique situations, circumstances, schedules, even our landscape, where it is that we are situated, how small or how large we are. These things all impact decisions. And so we're going to look at what makes us unique and how a later school start time would impact those unique characteristics. So in order to fully study this, we put together four committees, and I'm going to go through briefly what each of them are called and then what it is that they do. The school board subcommittee is really providing the oversight and input on each phase of the sleep and school start time study. And you can see the members of the school board. There are four members there, in addition to Dr. Palmer and myself. Our core committee oversees and organizes the phases. They're really about the process of this, and they're looking to help communicate the findings, they are helping with recommendations, and they're helping with ongoing feedback. So you can see that we have a representative person from each level of education. So we have the high school principal, we have the middle school principal, and Dr. Angela Tuck is our elementary representative, principal representative. We've also included the athletic director because this could impact athletics. We've included our director of transportation because that will be a very large part of our investigation. And Ferg Abbott is also involved with that as the Director of Human Resources and Facilities. Our third group is called the Scheduling Think Tank. This group is almost a separate study, if you will. Their job is to try and determine all the various high school schedules that could exist within a later school start timeframe. Now, that is not to say that any decision has been made. Simply, we want to have this in place so that we are doing a very concentrated look at how this could fit in a later school start times without going much, much later in the day. And so we have teacher representatives on there, we have counselors, we have the music department who is represented, we have assistant principals, special ed, and again, Dr. Palmer and I are both on that committee. Our final committee, and the largest of the four, is the Task Force. The Task Force is a large body that represents all stakeholders. We have a student group, and you can see there who will be involved. We have representatives in our student group from 12th grade, 11th grade, 10th grade, and 9th grade. We have administration listed down the center. Those are typically the same people as you're seeing on the core committee with one exception. Gabe Savage will be the principal representative for elementary. We have our teaching staff that have been identified. We asked who would be interested, and these are the people who returned an interest survey. And you can see also there, we have representatives across multiple subject areas. And we include music, we include special education, and we have a reading specialist who is at the middle school and the elementary, as well as an elementary teacher. The last part of the stakeholder group is our parent and community group. They will be notified tomorrow morning of their inclusion on this particular committee. So we didn't want to put that out here tonight. We wanted to make sure that we got in touch with them on a personal level first. So this group is really a very large body for a reason. They are going to be looking at proposed schedules. They will be developing surveys, they will be analyzing survey data, they will be giving feedback, they will be creating publications. In some cases, they might be even subgroups who will be working on particular events or presentations to the school board. So there's a wide variety of tasks in such a task force, and so we have somewhere around 30, maybe six, members that are going to be a part of this group. We're meeting four times, and it is at 6:30 in the evening. What I've done here is I've provided you the timeline that we're looking at, taking it from September 11th, which is when Dr. Troxel came and spoke with us, leading all the way up to February 10th, which is our expected due date for the final Task Force report to the board. I've only put in here the things that are the events, the meetings, so that people can understand that in between this, there will be ongoing communication with lots of regularity, community e-blasts that our community members should be looking for as they come through, and also our sleep and school start time webpage. Additionally, it is worth mentioning that any stakeholder can give feedback at any point in time. We have an email dedicated 24/7 to this. It is monitored daily, and all input that comes in, whether it's through an email, whether it comes through meeting up with a Task Force member, will be considered part of our research into the district investigation into sleep and school start times. Our think tank has much work ahead of it. In this committee, they are looking to brainstorm the various schedules that would have to be in place for a later school start time. And there are many variables when it comes time to making a schedule, no matter what the level. Things like lunch periods, whether or not vote tech will work, our athletics and our away games, the passing time in between classes, whether or not our IEPs will fit in. There are lots of variables that the Scheduling Think Tank will have to take into consideration. One of the things that the core committee did, just a quick reminder, the core committee is the group of administrators who are overseeing this. One of the things that we did, we sat down and we identified all the different variables that could be considered and would need to be considered when it comes time to do this. I want to share with you how you could find the Sleep and School Start Times dedicated webpage. On the left, you can see this is the school district homepage when you open it up. If you click on the About WSSD tab at the top, you'll see a dropdown menu. The last item at the dropdown menu is Sleep and School Start Times. If you click on that, it will lead you to the page on the right-hand side. Down the far-right corner over here, you'll see links. All of these links are live and ready to go for parents to access, things like research, Dr. Troxel's presentation, and something that I really want to point out, which is how to email comments to the Task Force. That link is live. Once you click on it, it takes you to the email where you can send anything at any point in time. In May, the core committee devised a student sleep survey based off of several research-validated surveys on adolescent sleep. The survey was administered to rising 9th through 12th graders, and 51% of the students completed the survey. Members of the core committee analyzed the data, and we would like to share that data So what time are our high school students going to bed on school nights? Of the 51% who responded, 25% said before 10 o'clock. 75% said sometime between 10:30 and up to 12:30 a.m. So when do they fall asleep? So it's one thing to go to bed, it's another to fall asleep. 55% said they fall asleep after 11:00 p.m. So when are they getting up? 62% said they get out of bed before 6:30 in the morning. Then we talked about what does that lack of sleep do while they're in the classroom? So that's this set of questions. How likely are you to feel groggy or tired specifically during your first class? 24% said sometimes. 34% said usually, and 28% said always. And if you add usually and always, we're looking at 62% of the 51% who replied that they feel groggy or tired during their first class. We asked how likely they are to fall asleep, not just be groggy, but to actually fall asleep in their first class. Good news, 72% said never or rarely. How likely are you to go through the whole school day without feeling tired, so start to finish? 68% unfortunately said never or rarely, going through the whole school day without being tired. And so we asked, how likely are you to fall asleep or feel tired in your last class so that we could do a comparison with the first? 56% said sometimes or usually I'm tired by my last class. So one last question on this. How likely are you to feel tired for most of the day? 22% said rarely, but 37% said sometimes, and 23% said usually, and we're looking at tired through most of the day. We decided to ask the converse question. Again, this is in research-validated surveys. We didn't come up with any of these questions on our own. We took them straight off of the survey. So how likely are you to feel alert during your classes? 22% said rarely, 37% said sometimes, and 32% said usually feel alert during their classes. So let's talk a little bit about homework. So in terms of how likely students are to fall asleep when doing homework in the evening, which all of these things could have lots and lots of mitigating reasons, 49% said never or rarely do they fall asleep doing homework, and 44% said sometimes or usually. So you're looking about half, again, of the 51% who responded. So this is the final information that we have here on our sleep survey. At what time in the morning do you feel most awake and ready to be attentive at school? 6% said 7:00 to 7:30. 43% said between 8:30 and 10:00 a.m. 65% of our students at the high school said that, in general, they do not get enough sleep. 67% also said that, based on personal needs, the best time for school to start is between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. That is in keeping with Dr. Troxel's research and the other research that is out there that you can also find on our webpage. It's important to note that we will be administering an additional survey. It will come out on October 4th to get continued data. We are looking for more input than just 51%, and we're also going to be looking at this data compared to what students responded in May. The final slide here is some enduring messages that we want to be out in the community, that no decision has been made in regards to later start times at Strathhaven High School. And there are many variations of later school start times, and we intend to do our due diligence to consider a variety of possibilities. Lastly, we are gathering information and input from stakeholders through, right about the end of January, to inform our report to the school board in early February. So as you consider this information, and especially to the community, I want to say, as you consider this information, it's important that you look at how much time there is to really take in all of the information. Pay attention to the webpage. Look at the announcements. Watch the presentations. We will have another event that will come up that will be a panel event where we are inviting some parents and students and teachers and administrators from other school districts that have implemented later school start times for us to hear from them about their experiences. So I invite you to attend these, get educated on the subject so that you can give input along the way, again, leading all the way up until January. Now, at this time, I can take questions about the process, and all of the questions will be noted and will be shared with the Task Force and will be included in our ongoing investigation.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Does any board member have any questions for Dr. Jones? Dr. Randy?
So not a question, but just a comment. So first, I want to thank you for leading us through this effort. I know it is a complex question to look at, and I just want to underscore a couple of the points you made, which is, you know, I personally think that this is a very important issue for our district to look at. I think the implications are substantial in looking at sleep issues among our students. But I also want to emphasize, you know, that there are many different possibilities that we can consider in trying to make a change. All of them will be complex in terms of thinking about potential solutions, but I think it's incredibly important for our entire community to know that this board certainly has made no decision on a change yet, and I think there is a lot of work yet to be done to look at what the possibilities are. So I don't want people to think that somehow this is a done deal in any way. It definitely is not. And, you know, to your point, I think we really do hope that many people will come forward and voice their perspectives and experiences on this issue as we try to work through what is a challenging question. So, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Osetti?
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I echo Dr. Grandi in appreciating all that's been put forward, and in respect to, nothing has been decided yet, I want to stress that when you ask input from the public, that we don't want just positive input. We want to have negative input, or input that's critical, input that how this would affect me personally, because sometimes people will assume that, oh, they only want to hear positive or rah-rah things. No, we want to hear how it would affect everyone in the community. So we have the different committees set up, hopefully to capture a lot of this, but if you feel like your voice isn't being captured, you can talk to people on the task force. You can talk to, you can, there's an email on the website, and please give us your thoughts and your opinions about how it would affect you or people that you know that you don't think are having a voice.
And, you know, I'm going to leap on that a little bit, too. I said that there would be a survey going out to students. There will also be a survey that the Task Force will be designing and sending out to parents right around that same time. There'll be both choice selections on that and then open-ended, so it's another place for people to really give candid feedback. And, you know, I've run many committees. Feedback early is great because then we can really chase down some of those answers, and we can really codify that. So not just early, but then I would say often. So just because you say something at the beginning, maybe over time you've reconsidered or you have some new information that you want us to know, please get back in and give us feedback. us feedback. It's not just one time that we want to hear your thoughts. We would like to hear your thoughts throughout the investigation. So I appreciate you teaming me up for that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rieger.
Our next item on the agenda is audience recognition in response to items for action on the agenda. Now, we have comments for, comments from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight related to the topics on the agenda? If you want to speak, please go to the podium. Please know that what you say will be broadcast and recorded. The recording will be posted on our district website. Only district residents or taxpayers have the privilege to speak. Denigrating any specific person is never appropriate in a public meeting. Welcome. Please state your name and address, and what would you like to say?
Thank you very much. My name is Bill Foster residing at 412 Strathhaven Avenue in Swarthmore, Pennsylvania. So this section of public comment is for response to items for action on the agenda. And so what I would like the school board to do tonight, as you go through the agenda, in honor of UN Climate Action Week, consider how each item relates to climate. And this is just an example. So when Dr. Jones just spoke, you could see all the complexities of the district and how changing start times would impact so many things, like IEPs and transportation to school events, et cetera. So climate's an even bigger deal. So just as you go through the agenda, think about the supplies that are listed here, the things that you're buying. Certainly on the agenda is transportation. So just, you know, ponder it. Thank you very much. And I'll be up for the second, more open-ended section of public comment later.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board on anything for action on the agenda? Seeing none, we move to our next item. We have nine voting members tonight. Our first item for action is the approval of the attached minutes from the September 9th meeting. Do I have a motion? Dr. Downey? Do I have a second?
Second.
Miss vote?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Say nay. Any abstentions? The item passes nine to zero. Our next on the agenda, we have personnel. We have several items for action in personnel. We have the approval of several appointments. First, we have a change in retirement of our former supervisor of operations. We have the 2019-2020 game worker rates. We have 2019-2020 appointment of an accompanionist at the Strathhaven High School. We have the 2019-2020 appointment of accompanionists in Strathhaven Middle School. We have the 2019 summer curriculum development additions. We have the 2019-2020 fall athletic supplement appointments. We have the 2019-2020 curriculum supplemental appointments. We have a change of assignments of instructional staff. We have a change of hours of instructional support staff. We have a 2019-2020 additional conference requests. We have the vertical team development appointment members, and we have the approval of personnel items A through L. As attached or described in the agenda, do I have a motion? Ms. Walkman? Do I have a second? Second. Ms. Semino? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have, I'm sorry, before we vote, I'm sorry, forgot that. Do we have any discussion? Sorry, any discussion?
I, I had, um...
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Walkman.
For the benefit of the public, Dr. Palmer, could you comment for the public on the summer curriculum development and PBIS and what that is? We're hearing more about it. And also, if you wouldn't mind, just a very brief comment on the vertical teams also, and what vertical teams are?
I'm looking at Dr. Jones, and I don't think I can do justice to the vertical teams. The vertical team process is when we are looking at our curriculum, and we are looking whether it is K-12 or it is a particular area, we might be looking at the elementary leg of the curriculum, but our curriculum is constantly going through a process where we are doing the review, we are monitoring, we will implement, we'll go back and review again, we may put it back for a full cycle. And the ones that are in the agenda right now, and let me, let me double-check where we are. Excuse me for a moment. If you would, I'm just looking to see which ones are coming through right now, and like, okay, now I do see the art in the social studies.
Okay. Yeah. So art began the vertical team process last year with a review, and what we typically do during a review is we look at our existing program. We also develop a mission statement, what inquiry questions we want to have. We do something called appreciative inquiry, which is what is working and we want to keep and continue to grow. And so the art vertical team this year is in a development phase, which means we will go out to schools and look at their exemplar programs and look to bring that back and to see what areas we want to do different things in, really. In terms of social studies, the social studies vertical team at the secondary level, so that's 6 through 12, they went through the curriculum writing process. They started three years ago. We did not pull the elementary into it yet because elementary, if you think about elementary teachers, they're teaching all of the same thing. So when they are also implementing reading, and they're implementing new math, and they just implemented new science, to all of a sudden sort of hamstring them with, and now we're going to change social studies, it seemed too much. So instead, we looked at the backward design model where we're starting with what it should look like when a student graduates from social studies, and move it all the way down through to sixth grade. We completed that work, and now it's time for K-5 to take a look at how they will help undergird that 6 to 12 group. So that's why social studies at the secondary level is still there. We're tweaking some of our scope and sequence documents, but social studies for elementary is sort of launching right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure thing.
The other piece that Mrs. Walkman asked me about was the PBIS program or Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, but let me first talk about the framework of Multi-tiered System of Supports, or MTSS, and PBIS is part of it. As we are looking at how we're supporting our children, in this particular instance in the elementary school, we have launched the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports this year as a rollout right at the start of the school year. At the last board meeting, I spoke about what I had seen as soon as I had walked into NPE this year, when they were filled with excitement and they were already talking from a school-wide perspective, what does PBIS mean? So all three of our elementary schools have the stated goals and their, the stated goals of respect, responsibility, and safety. And when we are looking at positive behaviors, we're looking at those behaviors everywhere in the school. We're looking at how do we conduct ourselves in the hallways, in the classrooms, in the lunchroom, on the playground, at recess, as we're passing classes, everywhere. We're all talking with a consistent message with what does it mean to show respect, show responsibility, and to act safely? And when I had spoken last time, I was even in NPE's class when they were learning their school song that incorporated the three terms. Everything that they are doing, even with messaging, signs, signals, all focuses around the respect, the responsibility, and the safety. And we're trying to address those items in a positive manner as opposed to a negative consequence. We're looking for the reward for the positive behavior so everybody knows what it means, and it is a school-wide effort so the children understand it, the teachers, instructional support staff, other staff in the building. Everybody is focused on what does it mean in our building and across the three elementary schools. We are all approaching it a little bit differently, meaning that it is all respect, responsibility, and safety, but it's a little bit different in each building because culturally, each building has its own flavor. So it doesn't have to be a one-size-fits-all, but the underlying tenants are the same. But how it looks is a little different, and the songs are even a little different from place to place. One of the items that I know Mrs. Walkman had mentioned to me with a possible topic for a focus, one of our focus topic sessions, PBIS and the whole MTSS framework would be an excellent focus topic, because while we know a lot about it, and I know the buildings are communicating to the parents and within the building, the larger community doesn't quite know what MTSS is. And for those parents and community members who would be familiar with response to intervention, MTSS is so much more than just the response to intervention, which is a piece of it. So it would be a wonderful opportunity to bring that forward, and I would think that our buildings might be really excited to share what they've done because it was a wonderful launch to the beginning of the school year.
Any other discussion, Mr. Oseti?
To be clear, we're voting on items B through L, correct? Because he didn't mention A. He didn't mention A, so we need to...
We're voting on, we're voting on items for personnel, A through, I'm sorry, A through L. Correct. A through L.
All right. Because we have, it wasn't announced what A was, so...
Yes, we're approval of personnel items, A through L.
All right.
Dr. Randy? You have anything?
Well, do you maybe read A, and then I'll ask a question about A.
A is, we have approval of, we have several appointments, approval? For approval?
A is...
A under personnel is just appointments.
One person being appointed, correct?
Yes.
We would like you to read this place.
That would be Ms. Figueroa, Figuera.
Cora.
For, for, welcome.
I had a question on this item for Dr. Palmer. If we could get some greater explanation as to the need for this position and specifically what gaps we're trying to fill, I would just like a little more information about this.
Surely. One of the areas that we have talked about administratively, and I have spoken with the board about, is how lean our administrative team is in Wallingford-Swarthmore. When we compare ourselves with other school districts and we look at the layers of administrators and administrative support staff, we don't have the layers in Wallingford-Swarthmore that many of our peers do have. And this was one of the areas where we were looking at what are those areas where we could divide up opportunities and strengthen what we're currently doing. So within this particular position, which Ms. Figuera is here in the audience tonight, it would be an Assistant to the Superintendent for Management Services, and the primary duties would be to assist me in providing for the overall operation of the school district, to assist in the planning and implementation of the school district plans, our policies, and our programs, to serve as the safety and security coordinator, to serve and perform the functions of the district's compliance officer, and to coordinate the student well-being program. One other area that I should note because of Ms. Figuera's background, she has a strong technology background, and she also has experience with PIMS, which is our Pennsylvania Information Management System, and data management. So she would be able to provide additional support in that area. So all of those items are the ones that immediately come to mind, as well as other items that come up in the course of the regular school year, but they're the main ones.
Thank you. Mr. Oseti?
And Dr. Palmer, would you say that our administration is much smaller than other nearby districts?
Oh, yes. When I meant lean, I mean much smaller. There are, and I can also give you another example as I glanced at Dr. Jones. In many school districts, there are administrators, and then there are even supervisors under the administrators. We have none, and that's very unusual for districts of our size. So I mean, when I say we're lean, we are small in terms of the staff that we have compared to our peer districts.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The item passes nine to zero. Welcome again to our district.
Thank you for the board. I'm very excited to be here. I'm looking forward to starting in November, so I appreciate you being able to help me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one item. Our next is policy. We have one item for action in policy. We have the third and final reading for policy number 122 on extracurricular activities, policy number 123 interscholastic activities, policy number 218 student discipline, policy number 222 prohibition of tobacco use, policy number 227 controlled substances paraphernalia, policy number 227.1 vapor risers and e-cigarettes, policy number 233 suspension and expulsion. These changes are also reflected in revisions to the K-12 Code of Conduct Discipline Code and the guidelines for consistent assignment of progressive discipline. Do I have a motion?
Some more.
Is that Mr. Oseti? Okay, Mr. Oseti? Do I have a second?
Second.
Miss vote? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? The item passes nine to zero. Our next item, we have several items for action in curriculum. We have the 2019 ESY and 2019 and 20 school year-related service provider contracts. We have the 2019-2020 school year tuition contracts. We have category 1A overnight field trips. We have category 1B foreign exchange field trip. We have the, and so we also have the approval of curriculum items A through D. Do I have a motion? Ms. Walkman? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Semino? Is there any discussions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Any nays? Any abstentions? The items pass nine to zero. Our next item on the agenda is finance. We have several items for approval in finance. We have the payment of invoices to vendors from August 14, 2019, through September 17, 2019. We have the Title Program Service Agreement with the DCIU. We have the Title I program allocation. We have the Title II program allocation. We have Title IV program allocation. We have the Dell Data Backup System to refresh the WSSD data backup. It's a 60-month lease. We have the CANDORUS Service Agreement for the installation and data migration of the WSSD data backup. We have the Power School Transportation Enhancement to the Parental Portal. We have the Cat, the Crabtree-Rurback feasibility study. We have the transportation study with the PASBO, which is the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, not to exceed $10,000. And we have the approval of finance items A through J. All as attached and described in the agenda. Do I have a motion for these items?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
The transportation study with PASBO, I left my packet at home, so what was that? Can someone remind me what that study is for, please? Thank you.
Ms. Q, do you have what the scope is? Bear with us one moment.
Here you go. There you go.
Uh, this is not the whole thing.
It's the whole thing.
They're not all there. Bear with me one moment.
Hold on. I want the original.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay. Bear with me one moment. Mr. Berman will hand me that. I will read that part. Okay, for the scope of services in here, we have asked them to review our current operations in transportation for best practices, to review the process related to parent communications, to review related... to review related processes for internal communication within the department and our schools, to review the internal transportation forms and processes, and an overview of the transportation department operations, including staffing levels, positions, and duties, and the operating budget. So basically, an operational review. Thank you. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for these items?
One more question.
Go ahead, Dr. Grandy.
I know that there were, there was a great deal of discussion about buses at the beginning of this year and a lot of problems that ensued. I'm wondering, Dr. Palmer, if you can just say, make a comment about the Power School Transportation Enhancement, what that is and what it will be used for in the future.
One of the things that we did not know at the beginning of this particular school year was that for the parents to receive the bus information in the parent portal of Power School, that was an enhancement to our contract. We didn't realize that at the time. We had done all of the work with Power School. We had set up all of the fields that we needed to. And if you were sitting on my side of the software, I could see that in our system. But what we didn't realize was it would not push information to the parents. So we needed an enhancement for the parent portal so that all of the transportation information would be readily available to our parents. This particular agenda item brings that enhancement forward so that all the parents will see real-time information on their student schedules, and we will not have some of the confusion that went on earlier this year when we were sending parent information back and forth by school messenger. Now it would be readily accessible within the parent portal.
Do I have a motion for these items? Ms. Semino? Do I have a second? Second. Dr. Grandy? Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. Abstentions? The item passes nine to zero. Our next item on the agenda is audience recognition response to topics not on the agenda. We now have time for comments from the audience related to things that we didn't just vote on. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Again, I'll have to remind you, just let me go through it. If you would want to speak, please go to the podium, right? Please know that what you say will be broadcast and recorded. The recording would be posted on the district website. Only district residents or taxpayers have the privilege to speak. By law, the purpose of public comment is to address the board on matters that may come before the board for its consideration. Therefore, the content of the persons addressed to the board must be on those matters. Denigrating any person is never appropriate in a public session. So again, before you speak, I want to inform you that this is not a venue where we'll be able to answer questions. If you have any questions or wish to discuss any topics with the administration or individual board members, I encourage you to meet with the appropriate people or person after this meeting and arrange a time for such a discussion. Could you please again state your name and address for the record?
My name is William Foster. I live at 412 Strathhaven Avenue in Swarthmore, Pennsylvania. So thanks again for having a public comment period, a public forum to bring items of concern to the school board. So I had the great honor this past Friday to accompany five middle school children who wanted to participate in the climate strike. So they went out on strike, and now they are catching up on their homework. Two of them came tonight. And so as part of that, they created posters, they stood in the crowd, listened to speeches, got to say various slogans, like this is what democracy looks like, and this is what it looks like. And it was a good experience for them. And I've been trying to convince them to come up and speak. But speaking of public comment is intimidating. For instance, you have to say your name and address, and you have to listen to what you're allowed to say and not say. But what I'd like to say is, for one thing, if you get a chance, today's speech at the UN by Greta Thunberg, you should totally listen to it. It's very distressing, but it's certainly going to be on the news channels, and you can find it on YouTube or various places like NPR. And I think what was so distressing about it is how little we've done, given how long we've known about climate change. Now, as a scientist, I have to put some of the blame on scientists because we're not great communicators. And one of the things is, we spend our time working on the next thing. So scientists right now are working on things like using gravity waves to measure distances to distant galaxies. They're working on quantum computation. They're working on using CRISPR to connect genetic, to correct genetic mutations and things like sickle cell anemia. So these are the really cutting-edge, new fundamental areas of science, and there are many others. But the fundamental science of global warming was all pretty much nailed down by about 1900. And that was before we knew about DNA, RNA, tRNA. It's before we knew about quantum mechanics or general or special relativity. It's before we had the transistor. It's so long ago. And what scientists are not good at is repeating themselves and figuring out what's the best messaging to make this message stick. I mean, scientists, like many teachers, sometimes get irritated if they have to keep repeating themselves. So we're not necessarily the best messengers. But what I'd like to say to the school board is there really are a lot of things. You're the biggest ship in our, in our, in our little ocean here. You have over 3,000 schoolchildren that you bring back and forth to school every day. You serve thousands of meals every day. You have over 300, I think, teachers that commute back and forth every day. And you have people that commute very long distances every day. There's a lot that the school district can do, and you can be excited about it. You can be entrepreneurial about it. I mean, a lot of your people that commute probably be really excited if there were charging stations here, that they knew if they came to work, they would have a place to charge their car. That's something that I bet you and your teacher associations could work together in a, in a positive way. The food that you serve, we know, makes a difference. So there really are a lot of things you can do. And so if you go home and watch Greta Thunberg, it will be bracing for you. And you think, especially within the context of your roles as school leaders, it's, it's a tough thing to watch. But we can do things, and we really have to. It's, it's very important. But it can be fun. I mean, as a scientist, I think, like a lot of us, I loved Apollo 13. They were stuck in that little capsule that was their lifeboat. They counted their amps. They made sure that they had enough to run the fan and jury-rig the filters. I mean, we're in our little lifeboat Earth here, and we can work together and make a difference. And this school district, with its $80 million budget, all of those transactions really, for the most part, relate to climate activities. So let's work together. So thanks very much. And if you can convince them to talk and show their posters, that will be true leadership. So thank you.
Without saying it'll help get you into college, kid?
There you go.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, thank you again. Our next item on the agenda is old business. Is there any old business?
Dr. Palmer, Dr. Palmer knows this is coming, but we had a student, maybe last spring, a high school student, who came to raise awareness about issues of cross-cultural competence in the elementary school curriculum. And I was just wondering if we've done anything to follow up on his concern.
I would actually have to check where we are on that right now. I don't know off the top of my head.
I have, anyone else for old business? I have one item for old business. I asked Mr. Abbott, do you have any sign update for the high school and middle school?
Not since two weeks ago.
Not since two weeks ago?
All the mentors.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next item is new business. Do we have any new business? Mr. Oseti?
I would like to invite the young ladies who have posters to show me afterwards. I'm an ecologist, and I am more than happy to see what you were trying to put forward for the world to see. You can wait till afterwards, so you don't have to be in front of the camera.
Any other new business? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.